All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll, it's Tuesday, am I yelling?
No.
February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And we'll start roll call to our left.
Homer, City Council member.
Dr. Joseph Ford, City Council member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Mike Warrington, City Council member.
Tim Berry, City Council member.
Buck Buchanan, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Lance Onstot, Assistant City Administrator.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Rick Lance, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Andrew Kovar in for J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Justin Constantino in for Les Mingus, Assistant Director of Community Development.
Susan Reuner, City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, and tonight, Councilman Henry is going to lead us in vocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, please guide us through tonight's proceedings in your name and your word, and give us the strength to move through this meeting as quickly as possible. And we just appreciate you and do it in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time we'll open the floor for public forum. If you'd like to say something, state your name, your address, and please keep it short. Public forum closed. Acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Do I vote? Oh. Fine.
You can if you want.
Okay. Where am I at? Seven, number seven. Seven point one Kansas Department of Transportation Safety Awards.
Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us to do these awards tonight. We actually have three awards to give out. One of them is we were blessed to be able to do annually. We've been doing it for quite a while, and I have Troy Wells with the Kansas Department of Transportation here to kind of give you a background about the award and where we're at in receiving this. But before we do that, we want to bring Captain Graber up here as well. He's been the backbone for this for many years, so.
Council, Mayor, thank you for letting me speak. Like you said, my name is Troy Wells. I'm retired law enforcement, and my job now is to get agencies to do more traffic safety. And I will tell you, the Andover Police Department has been great in doing this, and they, you can tell, all their officers are concerned about the safety of all their citizens here in Andover. Some of the programs we do is like the SAFE programs, seat belts are for everyone, it's a high school program, they're very active in that. The STEP program, Special Traffic Enforcement Program, we have four programs, Thanksgiving, New Year's, Click It or Ticket, and You Drink, You Drive, You Lose. Every year they work on these, like the seat belt laws for SAFE, they've gone up two percent from what they were last year here. So everything's on the rise. Teenage, or I'm sorry, child passenger rate has gone up eighty-seven percent, which is good, and that's zero to thirteen. I still don't understand why parents don't buckle their kids in, but, and then the alcohol crashes that they had here, they've gone down from twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two, six to four, so that's good. So people are starting to get the education across. I said, I wanted to present, AAA used to do this, but they decided to go a different route to help law enforcement now instead of spending their money on this, so we took it over. And for the last several years, AAA has awarded them with the Platinum Award with everything they've done. It's the highest award you can get. And when they send their paperwork in this time, we also gave them the Platinum Award, the highest award you can get through Traffic Safety Awards, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seven two, Police Department Annual Awards.
I need to do an award first. Mr. Mayor and Council, I do have a late edition award. Chief may not like me tomorrow, but.
I don't like you, man.
This award was presented to the Award Safety, or the Award Board. We kind of kept it on the hush-hush for a little bit, but the Gold Wreath of Honor states that is awarded to department members or police officers affiliated with the Andover Police Department who shall, in the line of duty, perform an act or acts of outstanding bravery, gallantry, or courage in furthering the basic police purpose by protection of life and property, enforcement of laws, preservation of public peace, prevention of criminal acts or apprehension of criminals, and who perform this act or acts without regard to his or her own safety or great physical risk prompted by his or her sense of duty to mankind, and when such act or acts are above and beyond the ordinary call of duty and performed without thought of reward or gain. And this award is presented in a wreath and certificate. Lieutenant Mike Scheiner wrote the Awards Board Committee stating, "On August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, during a homicide investigation, Chief Buck Buchanan performed an act furthering the cause of law enforcement through outstanding diligence and devotion to duty motivated solely on his desire to protect the community. Initially, the suspect in a homicide investigation's whereabouts were unknown. The suspect was known to have stolen the victim's vehicle through flock, through flock and approximate location of the vehicle was obtained, and it was found that the vehicle was passing flock cameras in the same area multiple times. Dispatch was communicating with Cedric County Dispatch, trying to get Wichita P.D. officers in the area to apprehend the suspect. However, that was not working out. Chief Buchanan decided to go to the area in Wichita and sit to see if he could locate the suspect. Instead of remaining at the police department and taking charge, as his position as Police Chief warrants him to do, Chief Buchanan trusted his officers to continue the work they were doing and took it upon himself to do the one thing that needed to be done immediately, find the suspect. We knew the longer it took to find the suspect, the greater risk to the public and potential loss of evidence was increasing. Chief Buchanan showed a quality that is sometimes lost in a lot of police administrators, trust your officers, and help where needed. Chief Buchanan demonstrated his devotion to duty, first and foremost, being a police officer, public servant, and duty to protect the public. Chief Buchanan found the suspect vehicle and was able to get assistance from other officers, take the suspect into custody, and within only a few hours of the incident taking place. Chief Buchanan's performance demonstrated his dedication to the department's mission through his commitment and wise use of resources. Chief Buchanan's actions were directly responsible for the quick apprehension of the suspect, retrieval of important evidence, and keeping the public safe. So therefore, having met the requirements of General Order M-1218 as recommended by the Awards Board and hopefully approved by the Chief of Police, Chief Buchanan receive and wear the department's Gold Wreath of Honor pin." And I will say, this was not the first person to put in for this. We did get a second anonymous request by another officer just a few weeks ago, so his actions were noted by many officers in our department, so. That's yours.
Okay, I'm gonna go on to the next ones. I don't like these. Okay, Mike, come on up. Notice that big old wings he has here? Those are actually true pilot wings. I want to make sure everybody sees that. That's why his are different than everybody else's, because we have certified FAA pilots, and I think that's amazing that we're one of the few agencies in Kansas that actually goes through that route to make sure we follow the laws and stuff, so that's pretty cool that they get to wear those proudly as well. So, we're gonna go over two awards, Officer of the Year and the Civilian of the Year. So on December fourteenth, Andover Police Department Awards Board met review nominations for department awards and made the following recommendations. So Detective Troy Snedeker wrote that in two thousand twenty-two, yep, he's in trouble now, Lieutenant Scheiner had worked several high priority and serious cases ranging from multiple child abuse cases, both sexual and physical, rapes, high-dollar thefts, burglary, substantial drug cases including fentanyl death, assault, battery cases, fire deaths, and homicide. Lieutenant Scheiner worked as the lead investigator at one of the largest, if not the largest, drug seizure in Andover PD history, collecting a hundred and thirty pounds of marijuana and T-CWACs from a single suspect. Lieutenant Scheiner sought out assistance from the DEA and was able to turn drug seizure case into potential funds to be distributed to the Andover Police Department to be used for further drugs and crimes to keep them out of the city of Andover. In two thousand twenty-two, Lieutenant Scheiner assigned himself a hundred and twenty-seven cases. Of those cases, he cleared nineteen cases through the district court, four of those cases were cleared through Andover Municipal Court, fifty-seven cases were suspended, and four cases were closed. In addition, Detective Snedeker wrote, Lieutenant Scheiner worked as the lead investigator on a fentanyl death case involving a juvenile. Lieutenant Scheiner spent months working the case, and even to this day, a year later, continues to work closely with the mother of the juvenile to get resolutions for the family. Lieutenant Scheiner gathered intel, uncovered dozens of individuals dealing with using the deadly drug, and has become an epidemic in this country. Lieutenant Scheiner conducted several undercover drug buys, search warrants, in an effort to charge those responsible for selling fentanyl to juveniles in our city. Although completely eliminating this killer drug is unlikely, Lieutenant Scheiner diligently actions most likely prevented several additional deaths of young people. Word got out that overdoses and deaths were occurring and that the Andover Police Department were investigating. Andover PD began arresting, charging multiple people in a large circle of dealers and users of the drug. Thankfully, the members of, the numbers of fentanyl overdoses and deaths had previously seen in juveniles seemed to have dropped significantly. Lieutenant Scheiner worked hours and weeks and months on cases than he's ever seen before. His drive to stop the drugs from spreading in our schools and determination, he showed to help parents who lost a son find justice inspiring. There's quite a bit on this one, and he was very real written. I'm proud of Troy for writing this up, because there was a lot of people that were putting in this, this award, two other ones that were very well deserving, but I tell you, a lot of the stuff that he did this year is pretty amazing, especially being short-staffed. So two thousand twenty-two was full curveballs, unpredictably including a pandemic and a tornado that devastated the city of Andover. Lieutenant Scheiner responded to the city when he learned of the tornado's impact and immediately began responding to assist those in need. Lieutenant Scheiner, keep messing your name up, I apologize, remained in the city all night doing what was needed and what was assigned to do by command. Lieutenant Scheiner slept for a couple hours and was then right back in duty to continue working the command to assist with the aerial photos of the tornado path using his drone. He was asked to work all day in the side escorting the governor of Kansas around the city to survey the damage. He continued work for weeks working in the command center and as a logistic officer to facilitate necessities to volunteer city workers and first responders. Lieutenant Scheiner was instrumental making sure tools, equipment were purchased by city staff, meals prepared, and delivered to city for hundreds of staff and volunteers. Portable restrooms were delivered and maintained for staff and volunteer use, as well as organized receipts and documentation required for federal forms and government aid. Due to the sheer magnitude and responsibility and significance and importance of this casework and the overall impact he is of this department, I believe Lieutenant Scheiner is extremely deserving and should be the two thousand twenty-two Officer of the Year. Therefore, in addition to his efforts and attitude demonstrated on a daily basis during the past twelve months, as nominated by Detective Troy Snedeker, recommended by the Awards Board, and approved by the Chief of Police, Lieutenant Scheiner is awarded the two thousand twenty-two Officer of the Year Award. Now normally, we have a plaque that we give. We had a slight problem with a vendor, so like in previous years, since I don't have that plaque, we're gonna give a pin. We had a pencil. Camille? The E-nine-one-one Communication Director, Becky Day, wrote, "I would like to nominate Master Communication Officer, Camille Gregory, for the two thousand twenty-two Civilian of the Year Award. The Communication Division as a whole has been faced with great stress throughout the year, from critical low staffing to dispatching and handling a significant amount of radio traffic, not only from Andover Police and Fire Department, but multiple other agencies responding to a tornado that went through the city on April twenty-ninth. Throughout the year, Camille didn't let any of the stressors affect her job performance, and she was able to rise above and prevail on many occasions. The first example of Camille's extraordinary performance this year, she was the sole dispatcher working April twenty-ninth when the tornado entered her city and surrounding counties. Camille acted quickly at the first confirmed report of a tornado headed towards her city by activating the tornado sirens before a tornado warning was put out by the National Weather Service, advised police and fire department staff of the duty and immediate threat to the city, and contacted her immediate supervisor within a few minutes while handling an increase of phone calls from citizens. While the first hour, Camille answered over forty-five E-nine-one-one calls, forty-three non-emergency phone calls, and over two hundred and twenty radio transmissions, and kept responding, first responders to the date, I'm sorry, of the weather while they were assisting citizens in affected areas. Camille worked as a sole dispatcher for approximately forty-five minutes until another Communication Division member could arrive safely to provide backup. Throughout the night, Communications Division handled over one thousand one hundred radio transmissions, one hundred ninety-three E-nine-one calls, and one hundred eighty-four non-emergency phone calls, often being berated, called names, and yelled at by citizens who were not happy the city of Andover was shut down to anyone entering the city. Camille had been a dispatcher for only ten months in that time of the incident, yet she did not lose her composure the entire evening." The second example was Camille's extraordinary performance this year was during her low critical staffing period. Had approached Camille, asking her to perform the duties of Communication Training Officer for a dispatch who had been starting in a few days. Camille not only gone through the training to be a CTO, she did not hesitate to accept her new role to assist the department in training of a newly hired dispatcher to get our Communication Division better staffed. Although Camille had no official training on how to be a CTO, she did not let that stop her from being ineffective. See, Camille was an active, attentive to her trainee, and when the areas of struggle would surface, she was quick to address them with her trainee and with me. Due Camille's inattenteness, attentiveness to her trainee, her ability to adjust her training style, and the knowledge in her new role as Master Communication Officer, Camille was able to advance her Communication Officer training through all four phases in training and relation from training four weeks early. With the two examples and much more not listed, I'd like to nominate Master Communication Officer, Camille Gregory, for the two thousand twenty-two Civilian Officer of the Year Award. Therefore, for her actions, efforts, and attitude demonstrated on a daily basis during the past twelve months, as nominated by the E-nine-one-one Communication Director, Becky Day, recommended by the Awards Board, and approved by the Chief of Police, Master Communication Officer, Camille Gregory, is awarded the two thousand twenty-two Civilian of the Year Award.
That's it. Consent Agenda eight, one through eight seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda items eight point one through eight point seven as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Nine, zoning amendments, thirteen oh six, East Thirteenth Street, Z-a-two-two-zero-zero-zero-five. This, this is an application to change the zoning district classification from A-one, Agricultural Transition District, to the SF-two, Single Family Residential Medium Distance District with a special use to allow for an event venue on a property generally located at thirteen oh six, East Thirteenth Street, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask council if any of them intended to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
No. Expartee communication, I will now ask, ask council if any of them have received any expartee verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item which they would like to share.
No.
No.
Protest petition, has the city clerk received any protest petition, petitions on this case?
No protest petitions were filed in the office of the city clerk within the required fifteen days following the Planning Commission public hearing on January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. I now ask the council members if they have received copies, have all received copies of the draft minutes of the Planning Commission for January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, which summarizes the hearing on the case. Yes.
Yes.
I now call on City Zoning Administrator, Justin Constantino, to provide us with a report on this case.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The subject property is located just east of the Thirteenth Street Sports Park along the Red Bud Trail. The single parcel property is less than one acre, and it is currently vacant. The applicant desires to rezone the subject property from the existing A-one Agricultural Transition District to the SF-two Medium Density Single Family Zoning District with a special use for an event venue. The special use is required because an event venue isn't allowed outright in the SF-two zoning district, so it's basically an add-on to the zoning change. The applicant desires to construct a small event venue on the property that will allow for sleepover tents, parties, and daytime events. Staff has reviewed the application materials and has no objection to the change of the zoning district classification request. If the zoning is approved this evening, the subject property would be required to be platted, and then any construction of the building would be subject to site plan review. The Planning Commission recommended approval for the zoning district classification at their January seventeenth meeting with conditions notably that any outdoor activities comply with the city's curfew and noise ordinances, and that any outdoor activities not includes, not including sleeping outdoors, be limited from seven o'clock a.m. to eleven o'clock p.m. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Have any written communications been received? Susan?
I received no communications whatsoever on this case.
Okay. Thank you. Does the applicant wish to present any new information?
I have submitted last time because I didn't have any questions.
We would like to welcome, we would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes, and the video of the public hearing has been made available, so limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing on, held on the January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Does anyone from the public have any new information? Do any of the council members have any questions? Does the applicant have any further response to public comments? Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the state statutes for council action, KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Planning Commission for the zoning case Z-a-two-two-zero-zero-zero-five, changing the zoning district classification of the subject property from the existing A-dash-one Agricultural Transition District to the SF-two Single Family Residential Medium Density District with a special use to allow for an event venue.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Nine to Southwest one thirtieth Street and Southwest Butler Road, Z-a-two-two-zero-zero-zero-six. This is an application to change the zoning district classification from RRural Residential District to the Single Family Two, Single Family Residential Medium Density District on a property generally located at the intersection of one, of Southwest one thirtieth Street and Southwest Butler Road, Andover, Kansas. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like, I'll ask council if any of them intended to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have conflict of interest.
No.
Expartee communication, I will now ask council if any of them have received any expartee verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item which they would like to share.
No.
No.
Nope. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
No protest petitions have been filed in the office of the city clerk within the required fifteen days following the Planning Commission, excuse me, Planning Commission public hearing on January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. I now ask the council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of the Planning Commission for January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I now call on City Zoning Administrator, Justin Constantino, to provide us with a report on this case.
Good evening again. The subject property is one hundred and fifty-three acres and was originally established as the Riverstone Reserve Preliminary PUD back in two thousand and seven. It has a base zoning district of R-two. The R-two zoning district is now known as SF-two, which is a Single Family Medium Density Zoning District. You may remember that the Riverstone Reserve Preliminary PUD was abandoned back in December of two thousand twenty-two at the request of the applicant. It stated that the development cannot exceed two hundred dwelling units and that the streets are designated as private. So the intent of the applicant was to abandon the PUD and start fresh. By abandoning that PUD, it reverted back to its original zoning, which is RR. It's a Butler County Rural Zoning District. So basically, the applicant wants to rezone the property back to SF-two Medium Density Single Family, so there's a little bit of ping-pong going on, but basically, it was R-two since, R-two slash SF-two since two thousand and seven, and it's basically back to SF-two is their request this evening. Staff has reviewed the application materials and has no objection to the change of zoning district classification request. The Planning Commission recommended approval for this zoning district classification change at their January seventeenth meeting. I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So if it went from two hundred available units, what is it going to?
So the language in the preliminary PUD limited the number of homes there to two hundred units, so basically, the removal of that preliminary PUD and establishing it back to the SF-two didn't cap it, so you can do more. I don't know exactly how many homes are planned as part of the overall development by the applicant. Mr. Ken Lee is available to potentially answer that.
Ken Lee with Garver, representative for the applicant. I don't have the, I have the final plat, or final PUD, which is a limited number. We're only doing fifty-nine units at this time. If I recall correctly, the total number was going to be closer to like two hundred and seventy-five units is where we're going to be in the, in the final version, but with it being a preliminary PUD... a preliminary PUD, that's subject to change depending on market conditions and such, but for the prelim, for the current phase, we're doing fifty-nine units.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a quick, it's really sort of, we, we keep growing, we keep adding all these new houses and all these new housing developments, and I see other cities having infrastructure issues with sewer and water. You know, you go down to, you know, like Florida and they're having issues with trying to keep up with the sewer. Are, are we shooting ourselves in our foot for approving all these PUDs and all these new residential areas and our sewer won't be able to handle it?
It's a very astute question, Councilmember Barry. As you may recall, we recently completed a comprehensive study on our sanitary sewer collection and treatment system. Probably sometime in about a year from now, we'll be bringing you bids for the construction of the sewer plant expansion. We analyzed during that time projected growth and these items were kind of included in that, and the new plant will exceed a twenty-year life cycle for us with the growth, and our collection system is in excellent condition, so we anticipate no problems with any kind of growth along these lines.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question, Justin. This is currently in the city limits, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I didn't go back and check it, so I, I just was looking at the red line around it and so. Thank you. That's all I had.
Once again, Susan, have any written communication been received?
No communications have been received in my office.
All right. Does the applicant wish to present us, present any new information? Nope. Would the public like to come, well, we would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda item to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video from the public hearing has been made available, so limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone from the public have any new information? Does the applicant have any further responses to public comments? Nope. All right. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the statute, state statutes for council action, KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. This time I'll ask you, how do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the ordinance approving the recommendation of the planning commission for zoning case Z dash A two-two dash zero, 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 six, changing the zoning district classification of the subject property from the existing RR rural residential county district to the SF dash two, single-family residential medium density district.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four, zero. Heritage mixed use.
Mr. Mayor, I am an-
Yes, ma'am.
Insert real quick, on both of those zoning items, any persons agreed by the final decision of the council on either matter have thirty days after today's action to appeal to district court. Want to make sure the public is aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Ten-one, change order number one to the heritage mixed use, first paving and incidental drainage part B and heritage mixed use second water distribution project.
Mr. Mayor, council-
I'll make those wordy just to see if I can get through it, is that what you-
No, you can, we can blame Les for that. He's not here to defend himself, so we'll just place it on him. But for your consideration, tonight is a change order to the previously named contract, I won't read it again for you, to add the, the paving and some incidental drainage work into that project. You see that depicted on the screens here and also in your packet. So well, the scope of work that we're adding into the contract or that the change order would add into the contract is what's depicted here. And so you can imagine, there's a lot of paving and incidental drainage improvements for the heritage project generally. Everything in that mixed use portion, so everything south of the residential portion, paving-wise, has been competitively bid and awarded by the governing body previously. The reason why we didn't include the heritage way, this portion, is because the timing of the engineering design for, for these improvements weren't quite ready to all be bid as one package. So using that as kind of our starting point, now that that's ready to be constructed, the change order is with Conspec Incorporated doing business as Kansas Paving, who was the, who was awarded the paving and drainage improvements that were competitively selected previously. So the engineer firm, the engineering firm in the project, the city's project manager approached that firm, Kansas Paving, and asked for them to provide a price to change order in this additional paving work, since they're out there already doing the paving for the remainder of the project. That has resulted in this change order. So Kevin Graham with MKC Engineering is in attendance tonight if you have questions specifically about any of the unit costs or the costs received, but the engineer and the city has reviewed the, the pricing and we're recommending approval of that change order. Any questions for me, I will attempt to answer. Kevin is also here for questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So forgive my lay question, we, we see that the highlighted in brown, the road there, why aren't any of the, I mean, because that's a pretty big jump from Yorktown Parkway. Are all the other roads going to that already approved?
Yes. So all of those of where you, as a governing body, have awarded that contract for all other paving for, that you see depicted here.
What about like Willowbrook Street? It's going to fall right into that dirt road. Is that going to take a beating and eventually need paved just for the traffic flow out of that area?
So Willowbrook, and I think your director of public works in utilities, it is being paved, correct?
Last year when we repaved the streets in that neighborhood, we extended the portion that was gravel over to where the connection will be made, so where they tie in will actually tie into new pavement.
And then I know as part of this project and just the project generally, anytime there's a connection into an existing residential street, all of these projects include traffic calming measures to, to, to limit the impact on those existing streets.
Thanks, guys.
Is that, is that, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm like Homer, so that is Founders Parkway, right? The brown area or goes into Founders?
Goes into Founders.
It's Heritage Way.
Right.
Yeah. Always Willowbrook.
Yes, okay. I'm just getting my mind around it because we, we're doing things to divert the traffic not to go through that neighborhood to some extent as well, correct?
Yeah, for sure. So there's connections that, there's, from a traffic operations perspective, that's not a route that most people are going to choose unless they live in that neighborhood.
Backy droods.
All right, thank you. Any further questions?
But that is, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That is going to be the way that like the Heritage Commons, that whole housing area is going to be able to get over to the Heritage Founders Parkway and, I mean, it's going to be traveled. That's, that portion of Heritage Way?
Yeah.
Will connect into Shea to, to proceed north into the neighborhood, but that, that west movement along Willowbrook and Andover Road, we don't, we wouldn't expect that to be a heavily traveled route when you have Founders Parkway and Douglas as your main kind of relief points.
It's mainly for the connecting to the rest of the neighborhood.
Right. Yes, that's where we would anticipate the majority of that traffic to come, to use that connection is from the existing neighborhood. Okay. It may sound like, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No.
This may sound like a stupid question, but these are all public roads. I mean, none of them are going to be blocked, they're all public access to get throughout the entire neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are they going to have the goofy small street signs as well, like the current Heritage? That I cannot answer, but I'm assuming there's going to be some, some continuity with the street signs.
You, you're referring to the, the white and white?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be the same.
Because, you know, us older folks now, I mean, I can't see them to read, to read, you know, to read them for my life, so I would highly recommend us, is there not a standard for those, Rick, that- We, we did invert the colors moving forward, so the initial phase is white lettering on a black sign, everything in the commercial, and even the last phase of the residential that'll be coming shortly is going to be black lettering on a white sign to get better contrast.
I will add, we've had some discussion about that in our in-house sign shop. We'll be replacing those over time to match the new for, standard going forward.
This is kind of out of the scope, but can any neighborhood get their own street sign? I mean, if Mike's neighborhood wanted to do a, you know, different color street sign, are they allowed to?
It's a good idea.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious.
So it would, generally you see these type of things done when it's done as part of a larger development. It's very customary to just, we would not just go in and start changing street signs all over town to be whatever the neighborhood wanted, and it has to fall within, there's a set of standards that the MUTCD acknowledges for street signs, and the white and black is one of those, but you couldn't just go get purple or-
So we as a city, we don't have a policy letting, I mean, do we have a rule stating that, you know, that yes, yeah, standard? Do we have an SOP for this or?
Our standard traditionally has been the standard that's out there that is pretty commonly seen throughout. There are other subdivisions around that were deemed subdivisions that have done this in the past, but not in Andover. This is the first one in Andover. It's been done that way. But your standard is what you see out there, the traditional green and white signs is what our normal standard is.
I guess what I'm getting at is if the developers at Twenty First Avenue Road at that housing area wanted to put their own street signs up, would we let them, or is there a, a rule, you know, a policy they have to follow?
We, we would need to see some continuity in that subdivision. We wouldn't want to see it's changed street by street by street. So if you're in a fairly decent sized new subdivision and you want to start a new, a continuity of that that meets the MUTCD, that'd be fine, but we do have a standard that is green and white, traditionally standard, that we, you know, we wouldn't just change for phase five versus phase six or something like that.
I was just thinking, I'd like a nice new street sign in my street, so I was just curious, okay.
I, I would suggest though, you all are the governing body, so if this is a concern, it's certainly something that you could direct staff, that you would like a standard and you don't want to see deviation from that, and, and we can move in that direction, but we don't today.
I, I just personally, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I feel, I like this, I like the Heritage signs, don't get me wrong, I think, I can't see them, I think they're too small, but, you know, I think we do need a checklist or an approval from, from developers to, instead of them just saying, yes, we're going to put our signs up and, and call it good, there needs to be some nice, you know, I think there needs to be some policies involved allowing developers to put their own street signs up.
I'm rel, I'm relatively sure that that cul-de-sac at the top, that ground mark right there is the wrong direction because I, I drove over it the other day and it feeds that traffic out to Douglas, not into that road. Like I'm a hundred percent sure because I, I jumped the curb to get into the cul-de-sac and it goes, feeds out to Douglas Street, but I could be wrong, but I'll make sure.
Right now, if you were to, sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I just go, i, i, if, if you were to drive down Shea Road, I believe it dead ends currently, where does it dead end currently?
Coming north of, of Willowbrook, you kind of see a Y right there where it goes northeast and that's Shea, goes northwest, and I believe that's, is that Sunflower?
Mm-hmm.
It was brought to just south of that Y, and so really with this, all we're building is the intersection maybe thirty feet north of Shea, part of Shea, it's just connecting into where, and that was built with the phase two residential that Perfection did, which is on the west side of Shea, that was recently completed.
Thanks, Kevin. Less, so go over again, why?
You mean Lance?
Sorry, Lance. Lance, go, I apologize, I didn't mean to offend you.
And I think-
What? Lance, go over again, why we're bringing the change order, like if we've already approved all these roads, why is the change order happening?
So the only road that is not currently under contract to be constructed is what you see in the brown. So because the contractors, they're building the rest of these in order to-
Sorry, can I stop you there? Why wasn't it already the sign?
Timing of the plans being ready to be bid. So we weren't, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, we just weren't quite, we had a very strict timeline on some of the other road projects because of some of the funding, you'll remember we've got some, some Kansas Department of Transportation grant funding for Founders Parkway that we had to get into construction on, and there was obviously some other timeline requirements for some of the private development that's happening. We had to get those out of the door. We weren't quite ready to include the, this portion of heritage with those, so we knew there was going to be kind of an awkward gap there. Now, since there, all of that's under contract, we want to add this to that contract, but it was all just timing.
And this is the last road, we're done after this change order?
The last paving project is part of the mixed use development, correct, Kevin? Yeah, and as you'll recall, it was October-ish, council rejected bids and those were, that included the pavers, the trees, lighting, irrigation, landscape, so we came back, stripped out what we're calling a street amenity package, all the pretty stuff behind the curb, stripped that out, and so with this street, that will be the last of the, you know, what I'll call the boring paving, black and gray, concrete and asphalt. There will still be another package that you guys will see, and that'll be all the stuff that's going to come dress it up and make it look nice, all your, your pavers dressing up the intersections, streetlights, trees, the, the two green spaces, well, three green spaces will be part of that as well, so kind of that last, you know, making it pretty will be the last piece.
Chief Russell, do you have any concerns to get the ladder truck to the southeast corner of that big building with, that's going up out there? Congestion, any, any issues with that? Kind of, kind of important?
Yeah, so your fire marshal has worked with your building folks to make sure that we have fire code required access to every portion of the building.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I got one last question. Rick, the last, so on South Heritage Road there, or Lance, that was already part of the previous paving package, right? On the, the South Heritage to the west?
South of Founders Parkway?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the change order number one to the heritage mixed use, first paving and incidental drainage part B and the heritage mixed use sex, second water distribution system contract with Conspec Incorporated doing business as Kansas Paving in the amount of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and nineteen cents?
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four, zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This might be a Lance or Rick, it might be a, eh, I don't know whose question. Is the UDM cover any of that sign stuff? Because I'll be honest with you, Tim, I feel like we saw maybe the signs in site plan a while ago, I mean, I want to say two years ago, kind of thing.
So in, the Unified Development Manual doesn't, from a zoning regulation or subdivision regulation perspective, doesn't prescribe standards for street signs. I think, you know, Rick, I know we've got, you know, the, the MUTCD that will say what's accepted, and we've adopted that in some way, correct? Not in the UDM, though.
That is a federally requirement that you comply with the MUTCD by the Federal Highway Aviation.
And then the site plan standards would only apply, you'd only see things on, you wouldn't see public street signs. So currently, it's like, like standards for street signs is kind of at the discretion or approval of the project manager, so either the director of- at the discretion or approval of the project manager. So either the Director of Public Works Utilities or Director of Community Development. We'd have to research how to best implement a standard, which we will.
I, I would prefer that the whole community has personally the same street sign.
Let's, let's talk about it in workshop or something. Okay.
It's like, we, we have addressing guidelines, you know, that your Director of Public Works Utilities and his staff use when looking, you know, and reviewing projects. We could have, uh, you know, street sign guidelines as well. We'll just have to figure out how to best implement that if that's your direction.
I, I guess I'm just really shocked that that's something that is kind of up in the air. Cause I mean, we limit what kind of sign you put on the side of your building. We limit the sign that you can put on, on the ground. We limit, you know, what color, you know, all these different things in the site plan, but yet you can just kind of put whatever.
Signs you're talking about, I, I missed my drive all over. I need to pay attention.
Just go over to the heritage. Yeah. They're, they're, they're nice. I just personally think they're small. I can't.
You, you think the lettering's small, Tim?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. I mean, but I also would like to, like, like I said earlier, I'd like to see, you know, some sort of standard that if you're going to change in your development, it needs to either go to site plan or it needs to come and be approved, you know, by, by somebody instead of just, you know, they just kind of get thrown up and. And I don't know if that's how it was, but.
I like the idea of a standard, uh, but I also think that you may have to have maybe one or two, maybe three different variations. But as long as they meet standards, standards with letter sizes.
Reflection.
And reflection. That's, that's probably the main thing. If you had one that's green versus white, I'm okay with that.
Well, let's, we'll kick it around the council, uh, I mean, in workshop. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor for listening.
We can bring you something. There is a standard. It is MUTCD, but it has couple options. So it could be the council wants to limit those options and, and not go with those. That's, you know, we can, we can come up with something and bring it to you guys for that.
Good job, counsel. Good questions. Actually learned something. It's hard for me to do at this age. Eleven point accounting contract, eleven point one Tyler Technology Invoice and Donna Davis.
Before you is the annual contract with our accounting software. Um, it is hosted on the cloud. Uh, this provides for all of the updates, their maintenance, taking care of it. The cost is within the budget. And it is shared primarily, the general fund picks up most of it, but the utility funds also sharing the cost.
Mr. Mayor, do you have one question for?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Donna. I sat here last year and when we approved this and I asked this question, I'm going to ask it again. Do the department heads have real time? Can they log into this accounting software and see where their, where their department sits?
We're working towards that.
Okay. Because that's what you told me last year too. So.
Well, it's been kind of a crazy year.
It has. It absolutely has. So that's.
Short staff and a tornado.
Right, absolutely. So are we, are we, I mean, is there a timeline this time next year?
Well, and part of it is I need an IT person that can make sure there's certain soft, certain program on their computer that allows this to work on it. So.
Okay.
It's kind of a domino effect. I've got to have this before I can do that, before I can do this. But yes. At, at this point, um, we do have, I know Jenny and HR and several people within the office have access to it live.
I just know it's hard to stay within a budget if you can't see real time, you know, what you're, you know, what you're going to be working against or working with. So.
And, and they are provided reports and amendments. And they call me and say, send me a report and they have the report. We can email it to them. So.
Very good question.
Anybody have a que, any more questions or can I get a motion?
Uh, I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Homer.
So I mean, are, are we? So we, so we don't have it up to the functioning standards that we would like it necessarily, but are you, is this, did we move to this? It's, it's been like this for a while, right?
We switched in twenty fifteen. We went live at the end of twenty fifteen.
And there's not a lot of competitors for this as far as redoing that? Or is that like reinventing the whole wheel and everything?
It's not reinventing the wheel, but it can be. I mean, conversion from one system to another is painful. The courts are also on this system and this currently works with our ticketing system. And so you, you kind of have a lot of units that have to work together.
Again, the dominoes again, kind of this, this and this and this.
It's not insurmountable to do, but we've not, there are no issues with the software other than like a lot of places, tech support, they're short staffed too. So sometimes you, you get put on hold. So you just put it on hold on speaker and you go on your way until they answer.
But this was the best out there at the time in twenty fifteen.
For the, for the amount of money and for what our needs were, yes.
Thanks, Donna.
I would also say that, um, despite the fact that I don't think we're as far along as I'd like us to be with the operability, we are further than we have ever been. So the idea of switching to something new and having to start over makes me get the hives a little bit. So, um, I think we're, we're getting where we want to be with Tyler Technology Software. And so hopefully we can just continue to gain traction and, and use it to its fuller potential.
Thank you, Jenny.
And I would add that, I mean, if it was over budget, that would be something I, you know, I'd push to try and, you know, look at other software, but it's definitely within the budget. So.
And this is just the annual part. To purchase, I mean, to the initial investment was more than this. So I mean, yeah, it's not something we look at lightly when it's time to change.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize payment to Tyler Technologies Dallas, Texas for renewal of the annual software contract in the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
Any further discussion?
This time next year, Donna, I really would love to see your department heads be able to have real time access, to be able to log in and see where they're at by the penny and not have to email. That seems very inefficient to me. They have to email you for a report. And then you got to take time away and send them an email. It just doesn't seem very efficient or effective as a department lead.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Fire inspection agreement, Rose, uh, twelve-one Rose Hill Commercial Fire Inspection Agreement. And Jennifer will speak to us about this this evening.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, the city of Rose Hill had utilized the Fire Marshal Service out of City of Derby for a number of years to do their commercial reviews for fire inspections. And recently Derby's Fire Marshal resigned, left, is no longer employed in Derby. And they have elected to not fill a Fire Marshal role, but to utilize, um, MABCD to do their fire inspections. That's the joint inspection group for Wichita, Sedgwick County. Obviously Derby is on the other side of the county line. So they're in Sedgwick County. Rose Hill is one of our sisters in Butler County. And, um, MABCD was not willing or interested in taking on a Butler County client for their Fire Marshal services. The Rose Hill City Administrator approached me and asked if we could take that workload on. I worked with Chief Russell and Fire Marshal Roosevelt. We looked at what they expect in terms of commercial reviews, the frequency that we think those will happen, the workload that Fire Marshal has on his plate. And felt like, um, especially they're currently doing one now to kind of try it out and see how it, it went. City of Rose Hill is going to adopt our fire code so that uh, Fire Marshal Roosevelt's reviewing to the same code he views to for our inspection. So he's not having to think about which, how am I wearing, am I wearing Rose Hill or am I wearing Andover? Um, and this seems like a pretty reasonable thing to do to offer another Butler County community. Um, we will recoup our costs. It is not a big revenue generator. Our goal is not to make a bunch of money off of the developers going into business in Rose Hill, but it is to make sure we, uh, recoup any of our costs. I'm sure Fire Chief would be able to talk to this as well. Your city attorney did draft the agreement and it was approved at last week's Rose Hill City Council meeting.
Where will the, uh, Fire Marshal be housed after the new station, uh, is complete?
Yeah. So there is an office named Deputy Chief in Station Two.
Okay.
But our plan is to keep him at Station One. I believe the chief level officer is still there supervised daily.
Not that the captains need it. Were there more to help move obstacles for them than supervise?
Just curious.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it, it sounds like they, you guys have done the work as far as Rose Hill adopting the code. But I remember in our workshop, we talked a little bit about, um, the workshop in regards to childcare and the inspections happening there, but then running into state Fire Marshal issues. Do we, maybe that was just for childcare. I can't remember. Is this something different? Do we still run into obstacles, whether it's Andover or Rose Hill? Do we still run into obstacles doing these inspections with the state? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes, it makes a lot of sense because I have the backstory. So we do still, um, work closely with the state Fire Marshal on childcare facility inspections. And, uh, sometimes it takes us a bit to get on the same page with them, uh, to have both of us on the same page. The inspections we're doing down there could include a childcare facility. Uh, but it's probably not anticipated by me at least. And so the, uh, general items that will, or the general buildings that we'll be looking at are commercial industrial. Fire Marshal won't have anything to say about those.
Thanks, Chief. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is this going to stretch our needs thin as far as our community's inspection needs? Uh, for deadlines and requirements, uh, when we add extra work to one individual? Are we going to need to increase his department or make this a department that needs an extra body to support mutual aid inspections?
No, we're going to be okay. So we looked at their history. If their his, if they continue to build buildings at the same rate they're building now, it's really a handful over a period of two or three years. Um, we just did a building for them. As this was working its way through, they needed help. And, uh, Jenny and I talked and I just said, Jenny, we'll take care of it. So we did that for them and Mike was able to get it fit in. I will tell you that I told Jenny and their city administrator and, um, Fire Marshal Roosevelt that our work is going to come first. So we're not going to put our stuff on the back burner, but he has enough capacity to, to get it fit in.
And is there a plan for our inspector to train maybe one of their employees to take that lead?
No, there's not. They, they're, we don't believe, well, it's more importantly what they believe. They don't believe their community has enough growth to be able to warrant to have a position or even a current position to have someone be trained. So this is much more, uh, economical for them and it makes more sense for them. We're, I would not go looking for this because we're plenty busy, but we're fine. We'll be able to help out a neighbor and they'll be able to cover our costs. And, um, we don't believe that it will negatively affect anything here at home. And if it does, then Jenny and I are going to be talking and we'll have to renegotiate.
And then, oh, Mr. Mayor, I have another question. Joe, what are you doing? So then, don't remember the letters, but like the MPAS SD that Derby does with Sedgwick County.
MABCD?
Yes, thank you. Uh, does Butler County have that same resource, division? No, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
I said, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me? You, you done?
Yes, I was done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for the, somebody answered the question.
Uh, Chief did.
I was just sitting here, I was just sitting here thinking Dr. Ford's been on this council long enough that if you ask any department head, if they need more help, they're going to turn red and say, no, but that's just on the mic, right? So. Yeah. So I got lost.
You're impressed, aren't you?
Yeah.
Look at my restraint.
All right.
Haven't talked about budget for next year yet.
I moved to approve an inter-local service agreement for review of plans for fire code compliance by the city of Andover, Kansas and the city of Rose Hill, Kansas. And authorize the mayor to sign agreement.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Thirteenth Street Sport, Sports Park Award Bid Package One. And Rick's going to talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, the Future Family Ford Sales Tax Initiative included the Reimagine Thirteenth Street Sports Park Project as one of the projects included in that sales tax initiative. As a reminder, Prab and the city council has both reviewed a couple of presentations on the designs as we went through this process. And we're now to the point where we need to do a Cmax one for this. The, we are only going to do two on this one. And the reason we're doing two is we needed to get one done early enough to get the Destination Playground Main Feature Component ordered in time that it would be able to be here in time for the park to have its opening on schedule. The Lucky Climber has a delay time that generally requires just about a, a year for us to get it ordered and get it here. Also, they went through a price increase at the end of the year, but they've agreed to honor the last year's price if we get it ordered in February. So that's why we're here tonight before you with this Gmax. The Gmax does include the Lucky Climber. It also includes the, some items in there like the temporary cost of work for items such as survey, layout, testing, materials and earthwork and such. It also includes project requirements such as the field office vehicles of the contractor, general contractor. Also includes the general condition supervision. That's the project supervision for the length of the project. In the end of the April, we will anticipate bringing you Gmax two that will be much like on the fire station. Those will all be sealed bids for the work such as electrical, earthwork, demolition, masonry, this type of trade work. And then I'll be brought back to you for approval on that with, uh, anticipated start of construction in May twenty-second, I believe. I'm going to make it that wrong. I should have wrote that date down. It's at the end of May, um, for the start. For the start of construction and with the, uh, anticipated completion in July of twenty-four. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to stand for those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to be a dead horse, Rick. I know we've already looked at the Lucky Climber. In perspective, the Central Park apparatus that we just approved and installed last year. What was the cost on that? Like the big apparatus, uh, I don't know, two-story, whatever apparatus in the middle?
The whole project was three hundred and forty thousand, um, which did include the, the.
The turf and all that, the rubber or whatever.
Is, is, uh, around two hundred thousand for that in that ballpark?
And then on this Lucky Climber, I noticed it's, it's about nine thousand in shipping. Is that because we're doing that through FedEx or is that, I mean, can like the mayor and I take his, his truck and go get it somewhere for, and save some money?
It's got, so that's a, that's a allowance. And that is to cover the cost, actual cost of shipping. And that would be sourced by our Gmax contractor. Crossland would source out that and arrange for that shipping and we would pay for that. It's, um, it's, it's just going to have to come on some semi. So that's the reason for that cost.
Two semis? Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, I, that's a, that's a nine thousand dollars. It's just going to take every bit of that to, for it to do that. Um, one other question here. The, uh, bond and performance, the payment and performance bond, uh, point nine. Is that the GC's payment, um, rate? Okay. Yeah, that's a really good rate. Yep. So, yeah, I was, I was really impressed with seeing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I moved to accept a bid from Lucky, Lucky Climber as presented and approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number One with Crossland Construction Incorporated Wichita, Kansas for the Thirteenth Street Sports Park Bid Package One in the not to exceed amount of one million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. And authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Second.
Further discussion?
I, I just, Mr. Mayor, I always appreciate, you know, Tim and, and, uh, Mike, when they have input from, you know, a, a construction background, I always appreciate that input, you know, when it comes to city council stuff. And Tim, any of the grass stuff coming up for the park, I'll appreciate your input. Thank you.
I just know how much shipping is. Homer, you would not be showing, you would. How much shipping a pallet of soil costs?
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Ordinance to Revive Terms. Rick's going to speak to us about this as well.
Go ahead, Rick.
Excuse me? Oh.
No, you get me again.
I thought that was funny.
And you guys remember way back in August of 2020, the governing body adopted an ordinance creating the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. As you might suspect, that ordinance dealt or set forth a lot of the formation details of that advisory board. One of them obviously being the terms in which appointees to the board would serve. As drafted and following state statute, the initial appointments that were made when that board was, was created are set to expire along with the mayor's in January 2024. The way the ordinance is drafted currently, the one that was previously adopted, all nine of those appointees would expire in January 2024 and all nine would be appointed to two, two-year terms. So in order to kind of remain, you know, or to, to retain some continuity on those boards and, and conformance with the way we do generally all of our other boards and committees is try to avoid complete replacements of boards. So the ordinance for your consideration tonight creates a staggered term appointment. So once these initial terms expire in January 2024, the mayor at that time would make five appointments to a one-year term and four appointments to a two-year term. And then from there, all appointments would be two years. So no more than five appointees would ever turn over at a time based on the ordinance that's before you for consideration. That is the only change to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that we're presenting to you in this ordinance is just creating that staggered system of appointments.
How many are we at now, Lance?
In terms of appoint?
Prab, how many people?
You have, you have nine currently.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Just really a statement. I'm glad you explained that because after, when I read it the first time, I was like, what is he, what's he talking about? So, but thank you for explaining it well.
Sure. Just write it better next time, right?
Well, I'm going to make you start taking a video for every one of these.
Yeah, yeah. You have to add, we'll add video on the side.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 11, Article Four, Section 11 dash 401 of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas, related to the creation and establishment of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Member items. I'll start with Tim Berry.
Actually, I have a couple tonight. I don't know if this is a Rick or Jenny or Lance question, but the plexiglass for the windows, is that staying for any longer or, you know, it was okay during the, you know, during the pandemic, but I mean, it looks kind of tacky.
Yeah. I mean, we can definitely probably take it down now. It's one of those things that went up and I think it's just kind of stayed. I don't see a reason why we couldn't take it down.
Scratched and scuffed and the bolts stick. It just looks tacky now. I mean, during the pandemic, we were trying to do anything we could, but if we're going to keep it, let's figure out, you know, let's remodel it and make it look nicer. So, yeah, these three windows here, so.
Good point. Thank you.
I have the same thing to say at the lobby, or for the library. I was in there on Saturday and they have all the plexiglass up and it's all scratched and it looks like, you know, it looks like crap to be honest with you. But then, you know, more power, you know, it's their choice, but the lady, lovely lady working, she was wearing a mask and she couldn't, she couldn't raise her voice up because you were in the library and I couldn't hear and she couldn't hear me and it just, it was just frustrating. I saw when I was in here last week, I had, a little old lady had the same issue here because they were trying to speak through the plexiglass and it just didn't work. And then you look, it just looks like crap. Do what? What'd you say? Yes, an experienced citizen. I do have some great news or some cool things going on. McKinley Evans, I don't know if you guys have seen the news lately or whatnot, but she is a senior over here at Andover Central. She's also part of the CAPS program and she is actually taking donations. So if anybody's listening on YouTube or anything like that, she's taking prom dress donations and it's basically free prom, prom dresses for the girls. For the lovely young ladies, along with, she has some tuxedos and some shoes and stuff for the men as well. It, you know, it's all over Channel 12, Channel 10. I mean, it's really cool, but I actually, you know, was able to talk to her this past week, just kind of in passing. She knows my oldest, knows my oldest kid. Really wonderful young lady. Great, great program. So if you guys have any prom dresses and you want to, you know, if they're just in, if your daughters have some and they're just sitting in the, in the closet because they're not going to wear them anymore, they're, they're giving them and it's just a great program because we all know, I mean, how expensive prom is between, you know, I don't know how, I don't have girls, so Buck can, you know, you guys can tell me how much the dresses are. I can just imagine. But I just think it's a great, great program. So McKinley Evans is her name. It's just fantastic. So.
So not that I have a tux, but does she take then money to rent a tux?
I don't, I honestly don't know. All I know is she's taking the donations of the product, of, of the items. So I don't know about if she's taking money to, you know, to give out or not, but.
How do you get ahold of her?
She's at Central. You'll reach over there or CAPS. I think CAPS is where they're doing most of the, most of it at. But I think the first one is Buck, you all seem to know everything over at the schools. Do you know when, I, I think the first one's coming up soon to, for donation. I think it's like February, like the last week of February. I could be completely wrong, but of when they do a donation. So that's, it's just a cool program that our wonderful students here at Andover are doing. And whether or not you like it or not, they are changing bus, bus, bus companies. I've gotten a few emails and phone calls about the school district changing busing. They're going from Durham Student Service, or Durham Bus Service to First Student. So people think we have the power to talk to the school board and have them change that. I don't. So I'm just letting people know they are changing the, the bus service. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Does that change the location of the bus barn?
No clue. I doubt it. I doubt it.
Just different buses.
Yeah, just different company.
It's no different than the work you do to manage your golf course where you put out an RFQ and you have people apply and they pick the proposal they like the best.
Everybody has their own opinion on everything. And I get to hear a few people say, thinking I had saying that.
Yeah. Do you have anything? Yes, I have one thing. Jenny, I want to talk about the recycle and garbage. Okay. So, and this is from experience too, but also other people that I've seen and neighbors and such. The garbage, they're very, very easy with the work with on the garbage side because you can have your garbage can and five extra bags and they pick that up. That's no problem. That's awesome. But on recycle, they've gone crazy on that part. It has to fit in, in it and it can't stick above it. And yes, or they will not pick it up. And they started that or enforcing it in December and obviously before Christmas. And I didn't know that. Obviously it happened to me, but it also happened to many other people. They had to go, you know, a month or two to be able to get their recycle through. And so I did, I was talking to one of the people at the recycle and they said that we do not have an oversized load amount that can be billed since it has to come through the city. And I was thinking if, you know, of course, it's their judgment call. If something is oversized, if there's an extra box of recycle next to it, then they would charge that. I know that there's other cities that do that and something to think about or maybe research. If someone does have a couple of extra boxes out there that they actually, you know, will pick it up and charge the person, which I'm okay with getting charged, but I just don't want them not to pick up anything because there's extra stuff there.
Okay. To be clear, I do believe they continue to take everything in your recycle bin, which is what you're supposed to put out. I do see there probably is a big logistical issue with how they're going to record who had an extra bag or two and then get that back to city hall. Not to say we can't look into it, but I'm, that, that sounds like a pretty logical response from.
So what they also do with every time they pick up garbage is they have picked, they take pictures of everyone. So there's a camera on, on the car and it takes a picture. So when I called in once and they told me what I had out there and I said, yeah, that's exactly what I had. And so, so they take a picture of everyone's, you know, so there's a picture of what's picked up or what's left. So they're already doing that part. It's just that we just have to have an agreement of how it will be billed. So.
In my neighborhood.
We'll have to look into that because I'm trying to think of who on staff is going to look at all the pictures after every pickup day to determine. I'm that, that's real manual entry, so we can look into it, but that, that's pretty time intensive. So we can certainly look into that and explore that. I don't know that I have an automated idea coming to mind right now.
In my neighborhood, the recycle will only pick up what's in the can, but the other one picks up everything. It doesn't matter if it's recycled, if it's cardboard or what. So they'll pick up, they'll grab it all.
Well, there's, there's one that I know of is Missouri Arc Garch. And I mean, they, they will pick up and they will adjust it themselves. They, they just look and see what they think is what extras it's costing and they bill you. So, and, and they do a good job with that. So.
The recycle don't get out of the truck and the other do get out of the truck.
Yeah.
Well, I, I do know that Waste Connections has the capability on trash. If you have a sofa or whatever you want picked up, they can bill that customer. They should be able to do the same thing that they bill for the additional. We bill for the basic and they would have to bill for the additional. Like Jenny said, it's not impossible, but the logistics of a month ago, by the time we get the information that somebody needs to be billed extra and they're saying, I didn't have anything extra. And then you got to look at the picture and.
Go back and look at pictures. Yeah.
It gets, now, one advantage of the pictures that residents probably need to be aware of, the rule is if your container's out there by 6:00 AM and they miss picking up your trash, they will come back out and get it. But if they look at the camera when they went down that street and your container wasn't there, they can say, we're not coming back out to pick it up because we know it wasn't there. So.
That's fair.
It might behoove customers to know, don't be calling in because you were like getting your trash can out and then it had already gone by because they know that.
Yep.
Guess I'm rethinking going out in my boxers to take it out now.
Yeah, but they're, they're really good on the garbage because they'll pick up an extra five more bags, which is great.
Only if you have the regular sized trash can. If you have the smaller trash can, you're not allowed to have extra bags.
All right.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Learning.
Because you're paying a smaller fee.
Yeah. Thank you.
Have anything?
Nope.
No, I got a funny, I got a funny story for Mike, but I, I won't take up our time. I just appreciate staff, appreciate Buck, you know, the, the citation, citation awards we gave out tonight. You know, really commend your staff. I, I think going through the community police academy really opened my eyes to how much work goes into the police officers, detectives, Shiner, these guys in regards to putting all this information and giving it to somebody that then decides whether somebody goes to court or possibly doesn't go to court. So the awards that maybe didn't, didn't get heard in the, or the, the points of the awards that didn't get maybe heard. You know, I'd like to re-educate the public in the fact that we had a lot of money saved. And then also recently there was new prosecution to the fentanyl drug dealer because of the legwork that Shiner put in. So I think that's awesome. And I also appreciate you going, going and getting that guy. You know, on the, on that investigation too. So thanks for doing what you guys are doing.
You're right. There's a lot behind the scenes and I appreciate you mentioning this Citizen Police Academy. Everybody in the department does their part in trying to teach it and educate. We will be doing it again. It's something I think we should be doing every year. As long as we have the attendance for it, we'll continue. It's just too valuable to the community to be able to come in and, and work hands-on and get to know the officers and firemen that are part of it now. So it's just a, it's a great tool.
I'm glad to see you've incorporated the fire department too in that, the little, a little bit in that academy so that they can, the community can see it. And if they do have questions, I, I think it's a great teaching tool for the community in regards to what all our first responders do from, you know, EMS, you know, onto the police and even 911 operators. I mean, the fact that she was there by herself and in this, the other award tonight for 45 minutes during the, you know, the, during the tornado and then after, you know, I mean, that's pretty astounding. And then to go in and see that room, it kind of just gives me chills right now on probably what she was going through. And then all the phone calls that are flooding in and just, it's amazing to me and I, and I appreciate the fact that she had that training, the ability to do it and, and just, you know, kudos to, to those guys.
One thing that wasn't mentioned, when I got there, there was about, I want to say about 12 people, citizens that were there that she decided to let them in, even though it's not open to the public, but she knew, what am I going to do? Send these people away? So she just made a decision, let them in. And so it was packed when we first got in there, but she did the right thing. Just, hey, don't send them away. Let them in.
Yeah.
There was a lot to that story of Buck's award and I, I think he deserved it real overwhelmingly. And Buck would never take credit for that. He tried to hand it off to his men and everybody else, which stopped ED. But he did a tremendous deal and, and things that can't be said that Troy and Troy and Mike, what Shiner went through is one of the hardest things they could ever go through. And them young man came through it with, with a great, great, God, what I want to say. I admire what they, what they had to go through to, to get, get this case resolved. And, and it's truly set, set, we went through, had gone through the police, the citizens academy and we went through the scenario and it wasn't, it seemed like a couple of weeks later, these gentlemen had to go through that scenario and even worse. And I cannot tell you, I cannot emphasize enough the, the greatness that is our, our, our police department and our fire department. And that's what this community is great, keeps us safe. But I couldn't, I couldn't have done what them young men had, had to do. So my hat's off to, our hats off to them for, for the things they had to go through in that, in that particular case. So, you know, it's just a, we truly are, it's a blessed community and I'm just very thankful to be a small part of it. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Motion carries.